Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, my watch says ten after nine. And I will call this, um, work set. And welcome to each and every one of you in Bluff. And thank you, Bluff, for, uh, hosting the, um, commissioners meeting here this week. So we will go right into the, uh, the joint Block Town Council, San Juan County Commission Works at Work Meeting. So at this point in time, I'm gonna turn the floor on over to, yeah.
Uh, it's, it's John with the offer invocation, an invocation and welcome.
I, I will turn the floor on over to them and then they proceed to do whatever they want.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here. Jim Sayers, Yatayab Bina, and good morning to all. Uh, I'd like to give a brief invocation. We give thanks to the Creator for this day and for our gathering here, and we ask for saving health to all sorts and conditions of life on this earth. We further ask the Creator on this occasion to comfort and relieve all here of distress and affliction and show the path to patience, forbearance, and gratitude for all the Creator has given. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
And thank you all for being here. I know last night was a long night for folks, so I appreciate the good turnout. And we'd like to call the mission to, uh, just this moment of, uh, the commission coming out of the community to hear from the various communities. They had a very good monument valley, and I'm happy to see that we're right up there. So thank you, commissioners, for making this possible.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate the invocation. Um, we have the next item, which is be discussed by David Everett, but I will, I will, uh, go to, um, Commissioner Adams to discuss, uh, two items, actually. One would be, um, the sheriff department, and then the other one is the good news to those of you that are running businesses and, and being a part of the town of Bluff. So we'll go, we'll give those two information. Bruce?
Okay, uh, I know this is not on the work meeting, but, uh, it's kind of an emergency situation, so if Sheriff, he'll come up. We ask Sheriff at our last commission meeting to, uh, meet with HR and, and staff and come up with some proposals concerning salary adjustments that need to be made or a salary schedule for our, um, uh, sheriff's department and the officers there. So, um, maybe if you can grab a chair and come on up. Jason, and I will, we'll be glad to receive your information and proposal.
Yeah, thanks for letting me, uh...
Now, just to let you know why we put them up front is there's a court hearing going on, and the sheriff needs to be there, so we're gonna try to take care of the item.
So thanks for letting me just take a few minutes, 'cause you guys asked me to, you know, kinda do some research. And I talked with the Highway Patrol and, um, tried a play, a play plan that they use. And then also Blading City sent me a third salary study. And so just did a little bit of research. This is a, a salary plan I came up with that kind of, uh, goes along with what the Highway Patrol does. But I think it's a good plan. Um, you can see, uh, you know, a deputy can go up to, you know, thirteen years, and then after that they kind of, uh, you know, max out. It has a good plan, a deputy would know, you know, what they're gonna make. And then, you know, after thirteen years, you know, then it slows out, you know, to retirement. Then it has each, you know, each rank on there. And then talking to the people that we've lost, some of the reasons that they've left is because we just don't have a plan. They don't know where they're gonna be, and other departments do. So this is something that I've researched. And this plan also deals with compression issues. I mean, sometimes if you don't have a plan, you end up getting compression type issues with, you know, what a deputy's making more than the sergeant or, or so forth. So it deals with that as well. And also something I liked that Highway Patrol does that would implement also is, um, in order for them to get raises, they have to complete certain training. And so I built this in between zero to four years, a deputy has to get certain training done, or, you know, they're not eligible, you know, for a raise that would be up to them. And then different training for five to nine years. Uh, and also something I think is very important in kind of pay plan is the second two pages are, uh, tenability, stats. And this is just our first two quarters at the sheriff's office. It's broken down by each deputy, so you can see that. And I started doing this since I was the sheriff. I have the sergeants gather up, you know, what the deputies are doing. Uh, we do, we're more than just traffic, but we can see violations, uh, the incidents handled, arrest charges. One big ser, uh, big thing we do is the sheriff's is paper service. We have to do that for the courts and Bayla for do court security. And then any kind of transports, the mental hospital or, or other jurisdictions, the sheriff handles that as well. And then, of course, traffic stuff. So we do a lot of different stuff, but I ask the sergeants to kind of monitor this and, you know, then talk to the guys if they're not, whether or not, uh, you know, keep up. So that's just some, that's just some study, you know, that can help us so far. And, um, I think it's important to, you know, implant this, so just wanted to present that to you from, you know, the last meeting.
One of the things that I thought was really important that, uh, we address is if we're gonna, uh, have a, a salary schedule that has steps in it up to a certain point, uh, I think one of the things that I had discussed with, with the sheriff was, um, we need to motivate, uh, our people to, to do a better job if they're gonna get paid more. They, there needs to be some accountability, and it looks like, um, they've got a, a way to make the officers a little more accountable. And, and I like the training component. Um, it seems like, um, other agencies, uh, uh, do a lot of training with their officers. And, and the last thing that, that I would ask the sheriff and, uh, his chief deputy and, and those who are in charge is, is to raise their level of expectation for each of the deputies. I think Sheriff, if, if you expect more out of them and they know that you expect more out of them, and you're willing to compensate the fact that they, they do a better job, um, I think they will do a better job. I think that's, um, something that, that can really help. But, um, my concern up to this point is becoming the training ground for other agencies that are willing to pay more. And what do, what do you think it costs to send an individual through post?
We figured out those figures before. We, uh, well, the post is, is covered, but we pay the salary while they're up there. So it's seventeen weeks' salary and then the food and then the gas. I can't remember our numbers, but it's a few thousand dollars.
Yeah, but, uh, do we still, uh, ask the folks when they go through post if they sign some kind of an, an agreement with us that they'll stay a certain number of years?
No, when I looked into that, the reason why is we, uh, we had one, and all the times we had that, we only had one person that left.
Yes.
And then, uh, it didn't, paper didn't do anything, you know, I haven't signed it. There was no repercussion. But the, most of the people were, were not losing in this first one or two years. I think they were signing for two years.
It's later.
Yeah, it's usually later on. And I think that's why they did it, what they stopped doing that, is because, uh, someone gets hired on, they know that after they get a few years of experience, they're gonna be more marketable. So we were losing usually after, you know, that time period anyway.
And do you know what the cost of this is going to be to your budget? And can your budget, um, handle, handle that cost?
Uh, we figured it out. We met yesterday and, uh, it's, it's quite a bit. I think we had sixty thousand dollars plus. Um, there were some other, like, uh, you know, the cost to it, so it is gonna be, you know, first.
But that would just be the first year, right?
Yeah, and it was a little bit smaller as we get into this.
Yeah, and so we're already halfway through the year, so it wouldn't quite be that, that much for, for this year. Um, well, commissioners, I, I think this is something that we, you know, we've committed to him that we would address, and he's kept his part of the bargain, so I, I hope that we'll, uh, consider very strongly this proposal and, and maybe we could take an action on it at our next commission meeting, but with, with some assurance to you that, yeah, you know, at least I'm, um, I'm willing to, um, consider this and, and pass it in our, our next commission meeting if there's, if there's not some huge objection that, that arises from it.
I think it's a great idea, mainly because I supported it, because we're very short on police officers on the reservation, you guys are out there. And, um, talking to Grand County, it seems like they're going through the same process there, there's an officer because of the wages. And, um, it kind of brings back, um, the idea of what the, the trained officers could sign and, and could do, maybe look a little bit more into that. And so that way, we don't pay so much for, uh, training officers and all of a sudden they see green and pasture and then jumping the fence on us. So I, I would take that into, uh, uh, the utmost consideration for the next extra item. I, I don't, uh, Commissioner Gray Eyes, you have any comment to that? Yeah, I'm, 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 say support.
So maybe you can at least let your department know that we, we have great intentions to, to pass this at the next, at our next, uh, commission meeting. Sheriff?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks for the, thanks for doing the, the hard work for us.
Thanks for that.
It's always nice to be Santa Claus.
Yeah. The next item, Bruce?
Okay, um, in the last legislature, um, which happened in February, March of this year, legislature considered very strongly at the urging of the San Juan County Commission, uh, to get broadband extended from Blading South onto the reservation all the way to Navajo Mountain. The UEN Director Ray Timothy met with me a number of times at the legislature and we needed from the legislature, excuse me, an appropriation of one million dollars to be able to implement the plan that UEN had to take, um, broadband to all the communities in the south, to the schools. And, um, please understand that, that's the impetus of this, this effort by UEN, Utah Education Network. If, if we were able to get the legislature to appropriate the one million dollars, there was a nine-to-one match from the federal government, um, which, you know, if you, if you can do the math, we appropriate one million dollars, this federal government then is on the hook for nine million dollars for a ten million dollar product to do the, to do this. I get a call Friday from Ray Timothy. He said that the federal government had signed the agreement and appropriated the, the nine million dollars to complete the project. Now, that doesn't mean the project will be done next week. It's gonna take a little bit of time, but, but the good news, I think, is that immediately there is not a right-of-way issue to, to the town of Bluff. I think they can get that here just as soon as they can put out an RFP and get, get a company to, to, um, bring the fiber here to, here to Bluff. There is a right-of-way issue on the reservation, and, uh, the money's appropriated. All we need to do is get, uh, Commissioner Gray Eyes to work his magic, get the right-of-way all the way to Navajo Mountain, and the fiber will be installed all the way to Navajo Mountain through Monument Valley. It'll be, uh, Monazuma Creek, um, all of those areas will, will, will get fiber just as soon as they can get it installed. I imagine it's gonna take more than a year to, to get that installed, but I, 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 as I spoke with Ray Timothy, he said they felt like they were making great progress with Navajo Nation on the right-of-way issue, that, uh, they were now in contact with, with the right people. They had made some, uh, personal, um, contacts and, uh, felt like that things were going smoothly. But I would recommend, again, that the San Juan County Commission, um, uh, write a letter or adopt a resolution, whatever we need to do, send to Navajo Nation and let them know the importance of, uh, of that right-of-way to, to get fiber all the way out to Navajo Mountain. The funds were, were a big hurdle.
Yes.
A big hurdle, but it was kind of interesting. I'll tell you a personal story, if you have time, but I'm gonna tell. Not the, we were at the last day at the legislature, and the appropriations committee had not, uh, included the one million dollars for UEN. And so I got a, I, I got a meeting with the Speaker of the House, Evan Bickers. He and I and a couple of other commissioners, Mark Whitney from Beaver and some of the other commissioners I had convinced to go with me, went and met with Evan and sat down, and I said, Evan, this has a nine-to-one match. If the state of Utah will appropriate the million dollars, the federal government will match it with nine million dollars. He said, oh, well, that makes it pretty easy, doesn't it? He said, you can go back and tell the people, we'll appropriate the one million dollars. So, so, uh, at the last day and the last hour, we got the help from the speaker, which, which, uh, made all the difference in the world, and we got the money. So it's, it's just fun to be able to report these kind of things to, to the folks in San Juan County. So look forward to broadband here in the very near future, here in Bluff, I think.
That's one of the words. Thank you so much with all the contacts that you have. Um, I think this is one of the, uh, the items that we've been waiting so long, uh, south end of Utah here. One question is, uh, I know that there was a hiccup in, in White Mesa. Uh, some lady was, um, kind of, uh, not resisting, resisting the broadband to go through. Did they take care of that?
Uh, as far as I know, he didn't bring that up again to me, and he usually does if there's a problem, so I think they may have solved that problem. You know, they were meeting with him.
Good, well, I appreciate that. Well, folks, um, there it is. I've been giving you a little bit of information here and then, every now and then, now we have the budget to start working on the project, which is, um, which is good. I really do appreciate that. Now, um, moving on, 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 on our agenda, um, uh, Bluff, do you have any other information or, uh, other item to discuss with us?
I don't believe so at this time, other than moving through the, um, joint meeting with the interlocal agreement changes.
Yeah.
So I've talked with, uh, David Everett. I talked with David Everett, um, last week about a couple of things. As people know, we did an interlocal agreement with San Juan County a year ago, but there were a number of things that we left untouched. One was just clarification as to the status of alleys, which we understand would now be Bluff's responsibility, but that was left out of the agreement. We also have realized that we may need some, uh, discussion about potential snow plowing on a couple sections of road that we have that were transferred from the B to C roads. I think we have a mile or two miles. Not expecting any snow last year, kind of, uh, it was a winter. We realized we might need some assistance there. I think that there were a couple of, of other points. Grant, did you have anything else that you wanted to add on the interloco agreement?
No.
No?
Was there any item about permitting and inspections, contracting for that?
Correct. Um, one of the things that we're doing is we will be looking at eventually setting up our own permitting for, uh, building permits and inspections, but that's something that we have not touched on as a, a way to deal with it from the, from this point forward. So I talked with David Everett about having a, a discussion to set up in that interlocal agreement or process for people who need a building permit to be able to still use San Juan County inspection, uh, inspector, but following our, our ordinances and regulations. So I think those were the three major points. Linda, was there anything I forgot? David, did that follow by those three?
Yes, definitely. I think the next step would be, excuse me, to just provide a revised version of that, and then the town council and the commission can approve them if their perspective means.
The other thing, only other thing I could think of, Mayor, is this, uh, kind of that load.
One of the other things that the town council has been working on is we've been talking to San Juan County School Superintendent and the school district about keeping the old school here in Bluff in the town of Bluff's hands, be able to provide community services and town offices. And a couple of ideas that we have, not just for town offices, but also to be able to bring in social security once a month, to bring in driver's registration.
Woodcutting.
And wood, woodcutting, uh, talking with the BLM about that. And one of the things that the town council will be doing is coming to the commission and asking if you can support us in that movement. We've had some ongoing discussions that have gone from transferring the school at a dollar cost to now it's probably what we should, should expect, that we would be paying a substantial amount of money for that per acre, about sixty thousand dollars. And there are a couple of other entities or people who are also interested in it, but because we're envisioning that the school building itself would be a community purpose, and this would be something that would benefit not just Bluff but the wider community, we would be asking for the commission's support at some point, hopefully by the end of the year. Anything else? And I believe those are the issues we'd like to address with the commission.
I just had a couple of questions, uh, about some of those issues. Do you, do you see the zoning and, uh, ordinances varying up a lot compared to what San Juan County has? I'm just, if you're gonna use San Juan County's building inspector, he's, he's a, he's tuned in to the San Juan County ordinances and inspection process. If, if you're gonna use him, will you have changes that you're gonna make that are different than what San Juan County does right now?
Last night we had, um, planning and zoning's here, uh, public hearing on the issue of ordinances, and that's a question that I personally can't answer. I've been not attending the planning and zoning meetings for a reason, so that I can look at it freshly, and it came before the council. And I don't really wanna put planning and zoning on the spot, but we have draft ordinances, and I can certainly send you the links to those, commissioners, so that you could, uh, pass them on to the inspector. But at this point, we haven't passed anything. It's still in the draft form, we're still in a working mode.
Have you, have you looked at the county ordinances and done any comparative?
What microphone? Yes, go ahead, Jim.
Uh, the, the draft does have, uh, some substantial changes from the county zoning, yes.
But the international building code, the building code is the key, because that's what the guy's gonna be inspecting is the building, not our ordinances. So I think that if the building codes are the same, uh, or relatively same, and I think we're using the international building code here. Um, and Amanda's here right now. She can update us.
Yeah, Amanda Podmore, just for a quick, quick clarification. Uh-oh, that's okay. I'm the vice chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the town of Bluff, and we're not proposing adopting any new, uh, building codes. We would be going with the state standard, which I believe is the international building code.
Well, I appreciate that. If you can, uh, maybe we can direct, um, David to start compiling those informations and get them readily available for maybe the next meeting or the meeting after that, who, uh, takes some action on that. And I think that would be, uh, uh, an ideal way to go. So, uh, thank you very much, um, for that information. We will take that into our utmost favorable consideration. So, uh, folks, before we move on, just to let you know, uh, under the commissioners meeting, item two, uh, a lot of you will be wanting to speak out. We do have a citizen's comment, and, um, you have, uh, the form to fill out, so that way you come before the commission and address your, um, whatever your, your concerns are, as long as they're not indirectly attacked into commission. But, uh, other than that, we'll give you three minutes to, to say whatever you need to say. So just remember that. I believe that the forms are set by the door. So with that, thank you very much, and we will continue to move. And, uh, it is, uh, David, it's, uh, it's your turn to discussion potential changes. Uh, item one.
Well, I think unless the, uh, town of Bluff has any other items of that one, I think we're, we're good on, right?
Right, yeah.
So we'll bring you something back in terms of a revised document, um, here pretty quickly. So, that's number one.
Okay, well, discussion about the future trash. Um, I guess Randy, are you here? And, uh, please note that, um, you're given about, um, same amount of time, three minutes, because questions will kind of length the, the discussion longer. We don't wanna be sitting here all day long, so, uh, it's your turn, sir.
If I may, uh, just preface it for a second, if that's all right, Mr. Chair. Uh, so this item is before you because I think there's been a lot of confusion and concern around, uh, the Bluff, what's called the Bluff Transfer Station, where people can... around the Bluff, what's called the Bluff Transfer Station, where people could drop off their garbage, their trash. It's closure and there was, you know, I think an understanding that there was going to be another one that got established and that has yet to happen. So Randy, who's our landfill director and the, definitely the resident expert on all things that we have to do with landfill, does an excellent job and I just thought it would be helpful to have him in here on the conversation with the town council, with the commission as we try to figure out the best way to move forward and deal with trash. Very good.
Rubbish.
Rubbish. So, item number two starts out with discussion about the future trash, drosch, trash dropbox site in Bluff, and I was going to lead that discussion. Unfortunately, I know nothing about the possibility of a future trash dropbox site in Bluff, so I don't have anything to say. I guess where it left off, as far as I'm aware, the position, the direction that I was given, that when Bluff became a city, they would be treated from a solid waste standpoint the same way that we treat Blanni and Monticello, which is Blanni and Monticello have their own dropbox locations. We deliver the dumpsters. When they're full, they call us, we come get them, and we charge them a rate. So, my understanding of the situation was a city of Bluff, town of Bluff, which is the proper, the town of Bluff, was looking to secure some land and build their own dropbox site. I play no role in that. I don't know what role the county is playing in that. At my level, there is no role. If you find a spot and if you get a spot built, call us, we'll be thrilled to bring you dumpsters and start providing that service and we will charge the same rates. It's a per mile basis for freight and it's a tipping fee that we charge everybody else. So, that's really all that I know about any future happenings in Bluff in regard to that. So if there's any specific questions, I'll be happy to try to address them, but that's pretty much the extent of my knowledge about future activities. Randy, do you want to give a little background on historical years? Yeah, yeah, so when I was first hired about three and a half years ago, I was told that we need to run the landfill as a business. We're an enterprise fund and we're not dependent upon tax dollars for the operation of the landfill, so we need to look at what the problems are and correct. And so one of the first things that I looked at was what's going on with our dropbox locations. At that time, we were losing about $75,000 a year and obviously, that's a lot of money. So, we looked at it, we made some changes over time and as of last year, we've significantly cut those losses. But, one of the things that we had seen, the dropbox locations used to be open four days a week. When I say this, we're talking about the Mexican Hat location and the Bluff location and we had one employee that would split his time four days a week between those locations. And we just weren't seeing the activity. We're seeing less than one customer per hour at those locations. It was just not seeing participation. And we made some pretty significant changes and we dropped back to only two days a week and thinking that we would double those numbers. That didn't happen. Today, well, not today, as of the last time that Bluff, I think we closed it November 17th or something like that of last year, sometime in November. You know, at that point, we stopped collecting data, obviously, but in reviewing that, we hadn't changed at all the participation. It was less than a half a customer per hour. So, yeah, you know, I think if you want to get more specific, I've got, I've drilled down the information, but I don't know, you know, how detailed do you want to get on that. I can just say participation didn't justify the expense that we were seeing to keep the place open.
I have a question or two. Was there, was there any kind of a line of increase that you saw in participation as the transfer station in Bluff from the time it opened to the time it closed? Was there any kind of a curve of increased usage or was it just static?
Yeah, sorry. All right, so as I said, I started in this capacity about three and a half years ago. The record keeping that had been done prior to that is basically non-existent. So, to answer your question, I could only go back to 2014 was as far as I had seen. And if we're talking, there's a couple of different things we can talk about. We can talk about the number of individuals participating, we can talk about the volume of trash participating. From a volume of trash standpoint, 2014, there was about 150 tons of trash that went through the dropbox location. In 2018, that number had dropped to in the 60s. So, it had gone down significantly and trying to stay ahead of things and think forward, the question is, well, why? You know, why did that happen? I don't know why that happened. I went and put out a survey, we just talked to people as they come in and the thing that I hear most often from people is, you know, why do I have to pay to dispose of my trash? I pay my taxes. I shouldn't have to pay to dispose of my trash. It's too expensive. If they only knew the cost, it's very expensive. Thank you.
Mayor?
And just so that people understand what the council's been doing, we worked with the BLM to identify a parcel that we could put the dropboxes on and we had an interesting conversation with Yuri Torres and it turned out that the one parcel they could identify was the parcel on the west side of town that's been designated as a potential gravel pit, which happens to be right behind the residential area. So the choice was, do we do nothing and continue to work to keep that parcel, not become a garbage area or a gravel pit? So that parcel's out. You know, I would just like to make a comment that I understand the rise in costs and I sat in on a commission meeting last month and heard the dilemma you're in with the enterprise fund not making enough money to cover what you need to do. But, when you look at this community, I think it's kind of a misstatement to say that the use dropped. When you change the hours and people are working and you change the dates and people are working, they can't get there then on Saturday or Sunday. They're doing, and so when things started decreasing, I imagine you did see a decrease in use. But what I think the council would like at this point, and it's certainly not the top of our list, but it's pretty near and close, if we could maybe get a dialogue with what the cost would be projected. Again, we got some, what I would call, soft numbers and projections at the time I was working with Kelly Pearson, to be able to maintain as volunteers a dropbox. But I'd like to go back to that and see if we could sit down and come up with some real numbers, because the community would really like to go back to having some kind of service. Right now, we're getting in-town service by a private individual, which is working well, but it doesn't serve the greater community and that's a huge concern.
If I may speak, just, you know, I think the form of Bluff Transfer Station, I think the people of Bluff felt like it was a regional station. And I think we still feel like there's some obligation to our neighbors across the river and we feel like if the dump station's not there, then we may have more trash being disposed of, just so you don't have to pay the drop thing. So we want to, we want to keep our area clean and beautiful and do what we need to for our neighbors. You know, I'm not familiar with the arrangement when that was put in, I've heard some stuff. But my point is, I think Bluff feels a greater responsibility to our region and I think that's one of the reasons that we're so adamant about trying to get something back in here for our folks that live in town and out of town in our area.
Yeah, so my position, I take direction from the commissioners on what I do and I'm sure they'll give me some direction. I'm very happy to share the numbers with you. Like I say, I think the participation level that we will play has to very closely mirror the participation level that we play with other communities in the county. So, yeah, securing the land and building your location, that really doesn't, as far as I'm aware, that doesn't involve us unless the county has some land that they cannot, and that's their thing, that's, I'm not offering that up, I'm just saying that's certainly a possibility. But I also agree, I want to do what we can to keep the county clean and litter-free and avoid the illegal dumping. I think there's some thing, we've talked in previous commission meetings about those things. There's a much bigger discussion that can be had in regards to solid waste, but I would just, if I can offer some unsolicited advice, I think, knowing the way things are going in the solid waste industry, people would like to see things repurposed and recycled and all that type of thing. And I've been working over the last couple of years to change the names of these from transfer stations to dropbox locations and it's been difficult, but there's a difference and it's a state-defined difference. Dropbox locations are pretty simple and they make it that way on purpose. People bring their trash in, they throw it in a container, they go away and it goes to the landfill. There's no involvement other than you collecting your fees and making sure you don't take illegal type items. But if you move to where you want to start pulling items out of the trash and repurposing and doing that, you're going to have to go through a whole permit process and you're open to inspections and all kinds of things. So, yeah, I guess my suggestion would be put, maybe put your efforts and your money into developing that curbside business and that's alleviate a lot of hassle. Landfill's 10 miles down the road, you know, we're there for the couches and the washing machines and that type of stuff. But we'll go over the numbers if I get permission to share all that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council of, my thinking is maybe a more comprehensive study or should be looked at. I think the neighboring communities across the river are also dealing with the same thing, illegal dumping and aroma use and so forth. So, that needs to be considered in your analysis in terms of what the impact either up or down would be in terms of looking at legitimacy of establishing a dropbox, even as far as securing and rendering land lays under an abhorrence, I think there's possibilities that we can look at in terms of that there is no jurisdiction problem, looking at it from the legal aspects also. So, I would like to see a little bit more detail, view on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. If there's no any other questions, I guess we will move on to the next item. And thank you very much and please continue to do what you can so we can get this transfer station issue out of the way, because it is really needed under reservation and people don't have a place to take their trash, so please continue to do what you can do. So, okay, the next item would be briefing on the county-wide special election taking place this new governor. John, will you give us an update on that?
About this, before I can... Okay, so David asked me to kind of give a little brief breakdown of special election that is scheduled for this new governor and why it's happening. And so, just kind of referring back to state code 1752A, it allows for the process to adopt an optional form of government. And that process can be initiated by the county legislative body by way of a resolution or the registered voters by filing with the clerk's office notice of intent to gather signatures. And so, on this handout that I gave you, I didn't specify or, but it is one or the other. So, what happened was earlier this year in March, we had five registered voters, and we call them sponsors, came in and filed the notice of intent to gather signatures. And, and once that happened, then they have 180 days to go out and collect signatures on their petition. The required number of signatures that is needed is 5% of all the votes that were cast toward the President of the United States in the most recent election. Doing the numbers, that 5%, that's 270 signatures that were needed to complete the petition. So, they had 180 days to do that. The petition was turned back in to the clerk's office on July 5th and we were able to go through and verify the required number of signatures by July 11th. And we did that by using this stuff, which is the state database for registered voters. You go in and make sure that the people who signed the petition were registered. We verified the signatures that we had on file with what was on the petition to make sure that they were the ones that signed it. There were, I don't know how many, there were some that we did not qualify based on they weren't registered to vote or they weren't registered to vote in San Juan County. But once we got that number, then we stopped and we were able to certify the petition, notify you all in an email and put a hard copy of the petition in your boxes. And then, we notified the petition sponsor, he's called the contact sponsor. And so, at that point, we just are ready to proceed with an election to ask the county, is a study committee should be formed to consider a possible change in the form of government.
Commissioners?
So, as I understand it, they met all the qualifications to place this on the ballot in November, but I'm not sure, I understand, how long does the study committee have to study and make a recommendation and who do they make the recommendation to and what happens to the results of the study committee?
So, if, in November, it has to pass, obviously. But if it were to pass, a study committee would be created and they would have, I believe the state code says they have up to a year to study it out and come up with a recommendation.
And who decides who's on the study committee?
The five sponsors.
They get to decide that? So there's no involvement? I thought that was the county commissioner.
It was too.
Decided who was on the study committee?
So, there's two different processes here and there has been some confusion from other members of the community as well. And so that confusion is that there's two different processes, like John David's handout has. One process is similar to what is the process that Moab tried to go through, which is the legislative body initiated that process. And so therefore, the legislative body would have a say in who the sponsors, or who the committee is. This follows the other route, this is the, this was initiated by the voters. There are some restrictions. They certainly can't get their, their study committee can't be, you know, all family members or all people in the same household. There is some restrictions or some requirements that it be, I don't remember the exact term in the legislation, but essentially that it be a broad, the diversity of the county is included in those positions. So, you know, in San Juan County, you would obviously need, it would need to, their committee to study it would need to reflect the diversity of the demographics as well as, you know, other viewpoints and that sort of thing. So, it's not like they have free reign to select whoever they want, but there are some requirements that they would have to follow for that. I hope that helps. follow for that. I hope that, I hope that helps.
My concern is, like you mentioned, demographic equity has to play into fair and not one-sided. One household against the community or the county, that's not my understanding of fairness. So, I think the, what I see is the party that's advocating for this is a group that has been against certain individual position of the county commissioners. So, what's gonna take place? Did the survey of these 100 or 278, are they representative of the whole county, or just a section of it? So, that would be my question to the sponsor. Thank you.
So, if I may, the signatures, the requirement here for the signatures is, there are specific guidelines, like John David has, has set forth. There are certain requirements that they be registered voters, that they voted in the last presidential election, et cetera, et cetera. And so, his, he has gone through that process for the, for the signatures to get this process onto ballot for this year. But you have to remember that there's a, there's a lot of different phases and a lot of different steps to this process. This is, I guess technically, we're maybe on the second step. The first step was they had to gather their signatures, and they had to be certified by the clerk's office. And the clerk had specific guidelines that he had to follow in order to certify those. So, once that box was checked, then it goes on to the ballot. If the, if the election, if, if in November, the community says, "We don't want to organize a study committee," and that's what the county says, then that's the end of it. It doesn't go any further than that. If the county, if, if the election results indicate that, that people would like to form this study committee, then the process continues forward with selecting the, the study committee that has to fit certain criteria. They have a process that is laid out pretty clearly in state law. And then, after that, if they, they may make the decision that it's not in the county's best interest to change the form of government, or they may just decide that it's this form of government or that form of government, have several options. If they decide to change or to recommend a change of, in the form of government, then that decision would then go on the ballot a second time. So, if this is going to go in front of the voters twice during this, possibly twice, it may end in November, but it may, it may come back for a decision on the ballot in, at a future date as well. I don't know if that answers your question. I think Mayor Leppner has a question as well, but.
So, Kendall, can, if it's going, if it's possible, it would be on the ballot twice? So, for the purpose of those of us listening to this, what does the first ballot look like? Can you frame the question that they're going to put on there?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a lot clearer than some of the ballot questions you get on the ballot in Utah. It will essentially be, should, should there be a, I think the exact language is, is in State Code. So, I, I have a handout here. I made several copies, and I'll put them over here. But at the very bottom, it has the exact question that would be on the ballot, which is, shall study committee be appointed to consider and possibly recommend a change in San Juan County's form of government? That, that would be.
I was wondering about election cost for this special election. Who buy, who pays for that?
So, so the tax, the taxpayers are obviously gonna, are gonna pay for the election. The, the estimated cost is, will be around $10,000, the, which is the cost for about any election. The city of Monticello is gonna be having their municipal general election, and so the city of Monticello will, will share in that cost, so it's not as much of a burden on, on everybody else.
And I believe I'm correct. It's not a partisan question. You don't have to be a Democrat, or a Republican, or an independent to vote on this. Everybody gets a chance to vote on it. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. I think another point that is important to point out is, once this process under state law starts and is initiated by the voters, which is the, or a group of voters, which is the process that we're dealing with here, the county doesn't really have a, a say, there's no place for them in, at this phase to do anything about it. They're just subject to the workings of the, of the law. The law requires that the steps are A, B, C, D, on down. And, and so, the county's just along for the ride. We're just, the county's only role at this point is to facilitate, well, number one, that the process that John David has already laid out, verifying the voters that the, that the signatures were legitimate. And then, the next phase that the county is involved in is, is simply to facilitate the elections. And that's because that's the county's role under state law for any election. So, that's why, that's why it's a county issue, is simply because the county is responsible for facilitating the election.
Bruce?
Sorry. There may be some unintended financial consequences as a result of this going on the ballot. Obviously, if there's a change in form of government, and there's more really smart people like Kenneth and Willie and I that are running the county, it could increase the cost of, of the government.
Willie?
I'm looking at the early voting information, and there's nowhere in the, just say, Montezuma Creek, Bluff, and Miami Valley. There's no other location identified for early voting. The other question that I ask is, the 270-some, uh, numbers, 278 signatures, how did that canvas the whole county?
Uh, there's, there's no, there's no stipulation in the law that, that says that it needs to canvas the whole county. In, in other, other parts of the law where...
Isn't that pretty well understood, that it should be the total county, not just one part, one section?
Right, right. And I mean, again, there, there doesn't stipulate in, in the code that says that it has to cover everywhere in the county. That, that would be up to the, to the people collecting signatures. In, in other, in other parts of the law where a referendum or an initiative is, is, is brought to the county, starting in, starting next January, that there is, there is, that there is code or statute that was passed this year that states that the county needs to be divided into participation areas. And if there is a petition started, then it has to cover three, three, 75% of, of the participation areas. But for, but for this part of the court, it doesn't, there's nothing that says that you have to.
There, there's no requirement of the signature phase, and so the county is just looking at it as the requirement that's required under the law.
What about the, who will be on the study committee? That's my question, reflecting that only a portion of the county is interested, not playing fair to the other portion of the county.
So, so state law, state law requires that there are certain guidelines, certain requirements for the selection of that study committee. And one of those is that it, that it encompassed the, the diverse community interests. And so, you know, in, in my mind, that would include that there would, there would have to be members of that study committee from the various communities and from the various backgrounds in the, that are, that make up San Juan County. But that's a process that the county will obviously have to make sure that, that those requirements are met if we get to that point, if it passes the election. But that's, we're not there yet, and so, but we are aware of, of those requirements. And we have made sure that the sponsors are aware of those requirements as well. So, so that's, that's what we're doing, or that's, that's the county's role in, in that process as well. And then, and then, just as a, just to reflect back, after they make whatever decision they make, that decision then goes to the voters again on whether to, whether to change the form of government. I think David has a question, so.
Just a quick, quick.
A quick clarification. Is it, I believe there's a part of the process, it's almost a weird step before, where the, there is a role for the county to appoint the group that then appoints the study committee?
There, there is a, there is a weird, and it's gonna be right after the, the election, there, there is a, a step in there where there's some, some say. And, and again, you have to be careful when, when reading the, the law, because they, they, they make it incredibly unclear, which is what the state legislature's known for. But they, they, they do a really bad job of, of separating which paragraphs are talking about the, the county-initiated process versus the voter-initiated process. And so, I, I know my office has filled up a lot of questions from concerned members of the public about this process, because they've, they've seen what Grand County has gone through, but that's a different process. Grand County's process was initiated in, in a different way than this one was initiated. So, while the rules are somewhat the same, the procedures are different because it was initiated through a different process. I think, I think Brad, Brad has a question.
Um, I think I'm good. Just a flitting, flitting thought, and at my age, sometimes they don't stay with you.
Their hand go up, and I was, I thought I was an auctioneer for a minute.
Okay, are there any other questions pertaining to the special election? Not too long ago, okay.
Eric entered himself and stated his agency's organization.
So, sorry, so I'm, I'm Kendall Laws, I'm the San Juan County attorney. And if, let me just say, if, if there is, if there are any questions from anybody here, or anybody listening, or anybody who you talk to, feel free to contact John David's office at the clerk's office, or my office at the county attorney's office. We don't have a problem with answering your questions. This is a little bit confusing, just because it's new, and, and, and so, we don't expect that the entire public is going to know the entire process. And so, if you have questions, feel free to let us know. I know John David's office is, is going to be working to get a lot of information out there as we go along, but certainly feel free to reach out to us if you have questions.
Any last comment, John?
No, that was, any more questions?
Any more questions? There be none. Thank you very much. I think this is one item that I've asked of at one time. I was told that a referendum or any other special election will cost a lot of money, and all of a sudden, these things are free to do so. I think it's pretty much geared towards the, the government of the county. There's a lot of us that seem to be having a hard time understanding the county having two Native Americans, and I think this is where it's going to, because I'm still getting texts saying that they're gonna do whatever they can to make my condition miserable to run the county government. So, I think that's where it's coming from, the process. Understand clearly that there is a, a group of people out there that are feeling that it's, it's really awful that the, to have two Native Americans sitting on the county seat. So, that's what it's all about. Anyway, moving on with the next item that's on the agenda, we have a discussion of other issues in Bluff area. David Everett, San Juan County, I think this is for the landfill itself as well, David.
Well, yes, it's a chance for the, the councils to discuss or bring up any other items that, you know, we're all here to talk about. And so, it's really just to catch off, just in case.
Okay. Well, Mayor, do you have any other items that you consider for the future of San Juan County? Commissioners, since we're here, maybe we can open a dialogue and start chipping away as we go by the years. And when we come back, we will get back into Bruce.
No, just gonna give Ann the.
Um, thank you for coming to Bluff. We wanna, we wanna extend our warmest welcome and look forward to working with, I think the most important thing for a town is to have a good relationship with the county. And, you know, as we incorporated, one of our things was to move forward with kindness. We're still following that. And the other thing I want to talk about is, is our town council has a vision of this part of the, of our town being a diverse town that, that welcomes all our neighbors and is able to help them in any way we can. And so, so my message to this council is that Bluff wants to facilitate, raise the, raise the, you know, the standard of living in our area as much as we can as council. Anybody else have anything to say?
David, is this an opportunity that the community could raise issues, or are you going to want to hold this Commissioner, Commissioner Marion Roy just wandered off?
I think that's a public comment portion of it, is everybody can raise their issues.
So, I think in terms of the council, we've raised, Linda, we've raised the, the concerns that we have.
Well, I'm gonna raise the concerns then, since you didn't want. Once in a while, we have some uninformed people that make accusations of the commissioner of the county not doing anything for Bluff. And so, I'm just gonna remind you of three things that I know that the county has been very helpful with, with Bluff. For the last about 11, 12 years I've sat on the community, Bluff had a problem with arsenic in their water. They came to the Community Impact Board, it was Skip Meyer, I don't know if he's here, and somebody came with him, and I can't remember his name.
Marcus Powell?
No, it wasn't Marcus. But they came and presented their issue. I spoke with as much influence as I could to get that, over a million-dollar grant to fix the, the arsenic in the, in the water system in Bluff. And to my knowledge, that has happened. The arsenic was taken out of the water, or whatever. Another project that happened was a stormwater study that was also brought to the Community Impact Board, at which time I spoke in favor of Bluff, because I represent this end of the state. And Bluff received a grant to complete that stormwater study. I believe as a result, you had some flooding after the stormwater study, came back to the Community Impact Board, asking for a million-plus dollars in a grant to, and I think this was Rick Reed at this time, I saw him here earlier. But the Community Impact Board, with my help, gave that grant to Bluff to fix some of your flooding problems. Another time, and I know this one was controversial, but with the help of DEQ and the state offering to help Bluff with a sewer system... to help Bluff with a sewer system, and they were focused on what the income of Bluff was, what affordability was of sewer rates, and granted enough money that the rates were very affordable, I think somewhere around $20 a month for sewer. Bluff chose not to accept that help from the state and the Community Impact Board to put a sewer system in here. All I'm trying to say is, the county has been very, very attuned to the needs of Bluff and tried to help where we can, and I personally have been attuned to what the needs in Bluff are. And even though sometimes I get accused of not doing things to help Bluff, I just want to remind you that I personally and the commission want to help Bluff and want to see you succeed and want to see you become a viable community, a town that you want to be in. And so, I just want to raise those, not concerns, but raise those issues to let you know that we're not against Bluff.
I was just going to say, thank you. And we'll be coming back to you. There's a lot of stuff, and we hope you'll look favorably on Bluff funding requests.
We have millions of dollars to lend.
Glad to hear that.
Just to follow up on that, the past year, I would really like to thank a couple of people who've really helped us out. David Carpenter has been a big help in getting things together with deeds and various questions we had on real estate.
Do we have him standing up there? Raise your hand.
John David Nielsen has been really helpful on the election process. Sam Cantrell did all the water mapping that's kind of over on that wall and then on the tables. His office provided a great deal of support to us in the planning and zoning. Kendall probably cringes when he sees the emails from me, but Kendall and I go back and forth on some legal issues, questions that I've had. Kelly Pearson really worked hard on the interlocal agreement and on the transfer station agreement that was kind of yanked out from underneath all of us. And David Everett's been a joy to work with. So I'm hoping one of our mantras has been, we're not going to look back, we're going to look forward, we're going to look forward to working with the commission, we're trying to take the he said, she said out of things here in Bluff. And so, if you're hearing things, Commissioner, please come to us and let us know what you're hearing, and we'll step right in there. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion to this particular item? If there are none, we will continue to go down to the public lands update next number.
Good morning. How's everyone today?
Good.
Well, this is, this is a little unusual. I'm usually at the tail end of the meeting and don't quite get time to bring up all the items, so maybe I'll take this opportunity.
You are at the tail end.
I realize. But the different thing this time is we're not at 11:00 or 11:15 in the morning. So I'll just take this opportunity to give you a little update on some of the items that I wasn't able to get to you at last commission meeting. Back in July, I attended a Gunnison Seagrass County Coalition meeting in Montrose, and there were five of the 11 counties represented there. And basically, what that was, was to select a representative from the county coalition group to serve on Fish and Wildlife Service Technical Committee. And that person that we selected was Robbie LaValle of Delta County, Colorado. I believe she's the county administrator there, and she's also a livestock permittee. So she will represent the counties to Fish and Wildlife Service on that committee. She was also a representative of the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, basically to tell the counties of certain funding opportunities that might be available for work to be done for habitat restoration that might fit in with the coming recovery plan, which is about a year from completion. And we also, after that meeting, we thought it'd be useful to have Fish and Wildlife Service present some of the ideas that are coming forward from the recovery plan and the draft, present that to the San Juan Soil Conservation District, since they represent the landowners in the area that primarily be affected there. And we also made that a joint meeting with the Dolores County, or actually, I think it's called the Dove Creek Soil Conservation District. So there were representatives of both of those committees in place that evening for the presentation, and Commissioner Adams also attended that meeting. And prior to that meeting, Fish and Wildlife Service had requested a field trip, a short field trip, of some of the habitat area that's critical habitat designated currently. And I believe that was probably the first time that those Fish and Wildlife Service representatives had been on the ground to actually see the situation. So that may have helped Fish and Wildlife Service staff better understand the situation in San Juan County for Gunnison Seagrass. I also attended changing gears here, skipping to the Forest Service Plan. I attended a cooperating agency workshop last month in Bemidji River. And basically, what the Forest Service had there was their draft wilderness units that will be coming forward in the scoping plan, which will be out, I think, in November of this year. And they had made some adjustments from the initial inventory and evaluation phase on wilderness. They also spoke about range capability using variables of slope, vegetation, distance from water, erosion risk from range land production, and there were other criteria yet to be developed on that range capability analysis. There will be another cooperating agency, of which San Juan County is a member, a cooperating agency webinar, August 22nd this week, and I will participate in that. And there will be a draft planned workshop for cooperating agencies on September 26th. And as I said, the scoping that the Forest Service has planned on this is due sometime One of the main things that we did not get to at the last meeting was a short briefing on the highlights on the proposed Berzer's Monument Plan. Now, I don't know if you have your handouts from the previous meeting. If not, I did bring new copies here for the commission. Sorry, I didn't have enough extra copies, I didn't look ahead.
We'll copy them.
But here's another one that you.
Thank you.
I think there is one more copy here if you want.
Thank you, sir.
If you're not using.
David need one?
Well, one was for David, but I think he probably left that somewhere in his files. I don't know if you had a chance to go over or look at any of those highlights from the previous handouts, but if you'd like, I can go through these major headings fairly quickly if that would be useful and think appropriate at this time. I guess I'll leave that up to you as to whether you want to take time on this at this time.
We'll take time, just continue.
All right. Well, let's go on the two, three page handout I've got there, cultural resources, a major heading there. And on the plan, it's important to understand that there are no implementation level decisions in the plan. This is a land area, land-based plan, basically broad-based decisions that will come out of this. So any implementation level planning will come in an activity level, cultural resources management plan, which I think is to be developed in approximately two years of signing of the final Berzer's Management Plan. Avoidance areas or rights of way that would or could be issued within the monument units. As far as the exclusion areas, that would include the Bridger Jack Mesa WSA in the Indian Creek area and the Mule Canyon WSA in the Shosh Jia area. I didn't mention that on the highlight handout there. So in that area, rights of ways would not be allowed. And there are avoidance areas where, if at all possible, any proposed rights of way would be avoided, and that's basically, I believe, the remainder of both units in that area, except in the Shosh Jia unit, there is an area on Highway 163 that currently goes through the unit, and that would be open to rights of way. So that's basically a quick highlight for the lands and realty program, is the exclusion and avoidance areas for rights of way. Basically, what it states there is that any existing rights of way would be retained, and that's in accordance with recognizing valid existing rights. Now, just for example, the lands with wilderness characteristics. And there are two maps here in your packet. One shows the existing wilderness study areas, which are the Bridger Jack Mesa and the Mule Canyon areas in both units, just to give you an idea of how these wilderness characteristic areas may fit with existing wilderness study areas. And there's different management, you may recall, or those different classifications. Wilderness study areas are managed much more stringently. Now, wilderness characteristics area could be, if decided so, managed with certain similar criteria, but as the plan is now written, there would not be any provisions specifically to protect wilderness character within wilderness character units. And those wilderness character units are shown also on the two maps, and they're identified by individual unit name, those are different colors on those maps. Livestock grazing. There are also maps that go along with that. In the Indian Creek unit, grazing would be available in all areas except the following, and that will include the Bridger Jack Mesa, which is a WSA, the Lavender Mesa, WSA, and Sherry Canyon would be limited to trailing, and then the Indian Creek area from Kelly Ranch to the Forest Service, excuse me, Forest Service Assembly would be trailing. And the Shosh Jia units, the grazing exclusions would be the nine side canyons of Butler Wash and the Comar Side Canyons, which are currently excluded.
Nick?
Yes.
I thought that in WSA's, grazing was allowed.
It is, and there's no, in this particular one there, if I recall, it's not the WSA that protected the grazing, it was a near-relied vegetation community that hasn't been affected to any significant degree by previous grazing, so the idea was to retain that in a near-relied vegetation condition to allow for study of vegetation ecological community. Now.
Well, I don't think you can get on top of Bridger Jack to graze anyway, can you?
Well, you can. There are a couple of old horse, I think it was probably horses in the past, but those trails have eroded and they're not in the best of shape, but there gets a way of. And of course, elk and deer get up there also.
You're not limiting the grazing on elk and deer, are you?
No, not yet. Not at all. On paleontological resources, collection would be by permit only in those units, and there would be no casual fossil collecting allowed. On recreation and visitor services, here again, there are no really hard line, we could kind of argue that, implementation decisions in the plan, but these would basically be developed within three years of the final plan in a recreation area management plan. And one thing in the, in the units that is stated is that for a planned wood record by the San Juan County OHV route system, and integrate it to the extent possible in travel There are some limits on organized events, and basically, they would require a special recreation permit or letter, and that's if an organized group exceeds 25 OHV or mechanized vehicles, 50 individuals or 15 pack hours. And I'll just skip down to travel and transportation management. Here again, the San Juan County OHV ATV route system would be recognized to the extent possible and integrated. There would be certain closed areas to offer vehicle use, and that would include the WSAs, the Lavender Mesa AC/EC, the Dark Canyon Wilderness, the San Juan Special Recreation Management Area, as well as Arch Canyon Inventory Roadless Area on the forest. And I believe that's basically all of them. Jumping over to visual resource management, roughly 12% of the minutes will be managed as BRM class one, and the remaining acreage as BRM class two. So those are the top two or highest visual resource management classes.
That's what I was trying to figure out, what BRM is.
Yes, BRM one, visual resource management. Orchard Woodlands, there would be no commercial woodland harvest on BLM plans. And then, within designated harvest areas, which is most of the pinions, unifor areas, private use of woodland products and would be allowed. So that's basically really a quick rundown of some of the highlights in the proposed Berzer's Plan. Do you have any questions that have come up as it's gone?
Commissioners? Commissioner Bury?
Thank you. At least, these are, as I understand, are specific to the reduction of the bigger Berzer's National Monument?
This is the current monument, which is 200 and some odd thousand acres, I believe, but it's not the large 1.3 million acres, of which this 200,000 acres is a part. This is the current monument as directed by the latest proclamation.
A lot of issues still remains unanswered in terms of Native Americans' perspectives on some of these. I don't really support this in terms of how it was done. It's sort of a railroad type of job that was initiated from the top to the bottom. So that would be my comment. Thank you.
I have comments. Jim?
Good morning, and thank you for your presentation. Looking at this Shosh Jia unit, it looks like about 80% of it is, approximately even more, is available for grazing. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. There were, I don't have the map right before me to answer that correctly, but there would be certain side canyons, certain side canyons that either are currently closed or would be closed to grazing.
be closed to grazing. So I believe the, most of the Shoshawah would be available to grazing. I believe you might notice, and I'm still there, I'm trying the right map. You might notice on the forest, I think they had the, the Arch Canyon area on both the forest and the BLM portions, as well as the Mule Canyon areas are closed to grazing, yes.
Just a question, and I don't know if you can answer it, but considering the availability of grazing everywhere else, do you think this area is appropriately protected?
You know, the proclamation itself did not exclude grazing. Basically, it stated that grazing would continue under the current regulations that the Forest Service and BLM use to manage grazing. And current grazing permits are administered by the Forest Service and the BLM using current technology, latest in range management, range science skills. So there have been evaluations as to, I guess you could say, suitability or capability or both of the range resource in these areas.
Any other questions? Does that consist of all your report? Yes, it does. Thank you very much, Nick.
Thank you.
We do appreciate that. And maybe for references, the next meetings, you might want to invite the NEBIKIA to be sitting at the table to address some of these concerns and some issues. And I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it is, it is now 11, no, it's 10:30, 36, 10:41 actually. I will call this meeting to order. Our Regent County Commission-
You can't start the meeting before the poll's done.
Oh. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, that sounds good. I will give the mic back to the town of Bluff to have their little discussion and meetings, and we can get into our meeting at 11 or past 11.
So it is-
Okay, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Ray Allen's motion is to recess. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So it is about 10:40 a.m., and I'll call the regular meeting for the Bluff Town Council order. This is Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. If you could do a roll call. And what can I-
Jim Sayers.
Bryant Murray.
And the land hook is on an excused absence. We've kept our agenda quite short to accommodate being able to do this joint meeting. So the first order of business is approval of the work session meeting, minute meeting, yeah, from August 6th, 2019. Has everybody received a copy and read them?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Hold on, any changes, modifications? Grant.
Motion to approve is presented, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. The next order is the approval of regular meeting minutes from August 13th, 2019. Has everybody received a copy of those and read them? Any modifications, changes, or discussions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. We're going to hold the public comment for the commission meeting. So anybody who wants to make a public comment should fill out a public comment form that's over on the table where John David Nielsen is standing and hand it to either David Everett at that end or John David at this end. The first item on new business, or old business, is approval of the resolution for the modified asset transfer agreement with the Bluff Service area. Has everybody read that resolution?
Yes.
And approval of this resolution would pretty much finalize the BSA transfer to the Town of Bluff. Is there any discussion?
I would make a motion to approve the resolution for modified asset transfer agreement with BSA.
I'll second that, Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. Just as a status update, the water conveyance deeds are apparently received this morning by the Bluff Service area chair. So that piece is done. The Town of Bluff now officially has been recognized by the State of Utah as owning our water rights and infrastructure. I talked to David Carpenter this morning, and everything is in place and ready for recording on the deeds for the real estate. We're just waiting for one piece from the San Juan County Commissioners, and then those deeds will all be filed. And the only thing then that we have left to do is look out the logistics of us taking over the actual day-to-day businesses of the BSA. Anything further on that? Any questions? Then we had an update on the fiber optic progress to Bluff, but Commissioner Adams covered that quite thoroughly. The only question in my mind is whether or not the White Mesa piece has been resolved. And the only response I've gotten back from UEN or Emory this week has done that. They can talk about it on September 23rd at the Economic Summit. So I'm taking that as, I don't really know that White Mesa's thoroughly been handled with all of the correct documents they have to go through White Mesa, but I'm working on getting an answer. Then the third is just a brief discussion of last night. We had planning and zoning's public hearing, which went really well and was very well-attended. We'd probably need to set a couple of work sessions.
We've got our draft maps out here for the, anybody here that wants to look at them, our draft maps? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I just going to invite people while they're here today then to look at our draft zoning maps. We're in about a 10-day process for analyzing, finalizing those. So while you're here, please look at those.
And the audio for the public hearing, probably posted today, if it hasn't, it will be posted so people can listen to it. The minutes will be on the websites as well. We'd encourage everybody to continue talking. Is there anything anybody wants to say in particular about last night?
Yeah, I thought it was really civil, and people were really polite, and got a lot of really good, good comments to analyze. So I thought it was a very successful public hearing. Thanks to anyone here who was there, it was great.
Then the order of new business is, I wrote a letter and sent it out to everyone to read as a draft on the Holland Rock Foundation regarding the infamous pedestrian signs and the method in which the Holland Rock Foundation and the council are going to work with Sam Cantrell to protect those signs until the new school goes into place. Does anybody want a change to that letter, or can we have a motion to approve it and get it in the mail?
Go for it. Grant. Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then I'll sign the letter and get it out today. Is there any other business? All right. It is whatever time, 10:47.
This is a record. This is a town record. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that concludes the Town of Bluff's business, and we'll pass this back over to Commissioner Mary Gore.
Can we take a five-minute break too, Mayor?
I think that's what they're going to do.
Yeah, we still have time to visit the local boys and those girls, so go ahead and we'll take a pause here and head and we will convene.
Thank you.
Was made to go recess while the, uh, while the town had their meeting. So at this point in time, Commissioner, we'd like to, uh, have you get us back online?
Like to go ahead and reconvene the session, Commissioner.
Recognize that, Commissioner Adams?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, we shall reconvene and... At eleven oh three. At eleven oh three. Um, Bruce Adam on the agenda is to approve the minutes, but, uh, folks, we'd like to participate, the audience, in, um, in the invocation before we start our meeting. Either that or a moment of silence. Uh, anybody would like to, um, um, help us out with the invocation this morning? If there be none, I will force to have Willie dance in circles. Anybody?
We want to see the dance.
Well, I will do the invocation and I will have Bruce translate for me later on today. Okay.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioners, have you had time to review?
Motion to approve minutes.
Motion was made by Commissioner Adams to approve the minutes and second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Any questions, comment? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unominous. Our minutes has been accepted. Okay, going down to the, um, um, citizens' comment.
Steve Pearson.
Before we go into this, there's a little rule. Three minutes is what we have on your comment. And also, if you have a comment pertaining to the same issue that somebody has spoken to, um, please, uh, move on to, to the next subject matter, because we heard that already. And if I feel like a comment is pertaining to a personal attack on one of, one of the Commissioners, I will stop, um, the comment. So with that, um, thank you very much and...
Quick point of order, lunch will be served.
What was that?
Lunch will be served.
Oh, just to let you know, lunch is, will be served right after the Commissioners' meeting. And I promise you, it's not Navajo Taco.
I can't unpause it.
I know, I know. Okay, the first person that's going to be coming up, and please introduce yourself to the record, and we will continue. Uh, Steve Pearson.
Michael Havakken.
Michael Havakken, please be standing by.
Good morning. My name's Steve. My name's Steve Pearson. I, I have a matter of concern. The roads in this end of the county on the reservation where I live are not suitable for bus travel. They're not. They're, the roads are hazardous. They're going to get some little kid bucked out of a seat and hurt. Something needs to be done about this, or something needs to be done about different alternate transportation for the kids until it is addressed. Now San Juan County took care of these roads for many years, and they were suitable then. When the Navajo tribe took them over, there was nothing had done with them whatsoever. It's a real concern. The citizens of San Juan County and the state of Utah shouldn't be, uh, the ones that buy, own, operate, insure, assume the liability for the buses, do all the maintenance. There's something should be done with the roads. I asked you before about it, and nothing I've ever heard of anything. I know minimum weight maintenance, and they never had water trucks or anything else to substantial repair on the roads. It needs to be addressed. It, that's not fair to the taxpayers to have to, to put up with this and be responsible for the liability on it. Your roads over in Navajo Mountain are just as bad. Everybody's roads out here. And not only that, there, well, there's Northern Road that really needs to be milled up and redone. That's West Summit. But, uh, I don't know, but, uh... Another thing, the only other thing I have is nobody's addressed our physical address situation out here. Nobody's ever put anything in to get any road signs back on the reservation. And I think a little attention should be done, paid down on this end of the county. Please address this. Somebody has to go talk to the tribe. Somebody has to. I don't know if you want to appoint somebody to do it?
Aye.
Or whatever.
Well, Steve, I really do appreciate that concern. You brought that before us many times. And believe me, the three Commissioners sitting here, we've been knocking on the door to the Navajo Nation President. He has not met with us. We are ready. We have the equipment. We have some fundings, and we're willing to get on the roads. But the Navajo Nation, the BIA, and also the, uh, the indop, needs to sign the IGA. We're waiting on that. And we even visit the, the Governor. He's willing to help as well. But we just have not sat down with the tribe. We've been trying. Um, my Vice President from Mexican Water Chapter is a personal grand, grandfather to the President. He went and visited him. He has not visited with us. Willie's been trying to contact the staff to the President's office. They've been making promises two times. One in Red Mesa and one in Mexican Water. They did not show up. And there's another meeting that we called for, hoping that we, that we're, that we would have a meeting with. I understand the maintenance costs on those buses when they get on that bad road. It is bad. One individual died because of the road potholes over in Hatch area. These are the things that we're dealing with, and believe me, we are trying the best that we can. We're readily available and we're ready to tackle this, but the tribe is not willing to come to the table. If they would say no, we would understand, but why? Nothing. Nothing's happening.
Ask the tribe if they would be, maybe even consider putting their own buses out here, and then assume the liability and the safety factors dealt with kids. The tribe has got to take a little bit of notice in this because it's the kids that's going to get hurt. And that, that's just not right. They, they...
They won't even let us put any signs up. The, the signs that we had, we were forced to take those signs down. And the addressing, the rural addresses out there, making those addresses with the GPS right now.
Yeah, but still, this, uh, last time that I talked to you about this was in April.
Okay.
And, uh, somebody's got to get that tribe off the top dead sack.
We, we, we will stay, um, timed. So, uh, thank you. Thank you very much. We will continue to address that and we'll do what we can. And as far as knocking on the door, we will. Thank you.
Michael Havakken.
Michael Havakken.
Jim Sayers on deck.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Uh, thank you for having the meeting in mind today. Um, I would like to bring, uh, to your attention the condition of the sea roads, uh, that were turned over to the town in August of 2019. Um, decades of neglect to the town's roads have resulted in a backlog of necessary maintenance. The order of magnitude to bring Bluff's roads up to a maintainable, maintainable level is estimated between 1.5 and $2 million. Uh, the majority of the big repairs need to be done to the seven and a half miles of paved roads. Um, and my question here this morning is, is the town now alone in trying to figure out a way to bring these roads up to a maintainable, uh, standard? Um, uh, I've been told by county officials that Bluff is a leading source of income for the county. Uh, a leading source of revenue for the county. Uh, so my question to the Commissioners this morning is, will the county help Bluff with the repair of these roads? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Jim Sayers also.
Jim Sayers.
Amanda Podmore.
Amanda Podmore? Amanda, please be standing by.
Uh, thank you. I, uh, this morning, I would just like to pass the resolution that was passed by the Bluff Town Council on to the Commission for their consideration. This was a resolution opposing an urgent caution regarding oil and gas leasing on Bureau of Land Management administered lands near Hovenweed National Monument. The, um, just briefly, the leasing has expanded by multiple times, I believe, over what has been done in the last 20 years. I think in the last year or two, uh, we've, we've gotten, uh, a huge, uh, increase in the, in the number of leases that are available. They're being decided next month, many of them, and then there's another batch that are going to be decided later on. Some of these leases are within four miles of Hovenweed National Monument, and the resolution essentially says that since we are a gateway community, and I think that could be said for the whole county, but, um, Hovenweed National Monument is a, is a national jewel, obviously, and, uh, we are very protective of our water as well, so, and the water in the San Juan River. So I, I think these, uh, some of the rules that are governing the protection of these leases, of, of these, uh, sites have been suspended, and, uh, we would just like to see a lot more caution about these leases, and that's what this is all about. So I'm passing that resolution to you. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's Michael Duke, too.
Okay, Amanda Podmore.
Amanda Podmore, I'm a resident of Bluff. I'm hoping to speak to you about, uh, three things quickly today. Um, the first, to add on to what, um, Jim Sayers said, I want to thank the County Commission for your responsiveness and leadership on these field and oil and gas issues impacting the cultural landscape between Bear's Ears, Hovenweed, and Cans of the Ancients National Monuments. I want to in particular thank Commissioner Gray Eyes, Mayor Lebanon, and Councilman Sayers for participating in a field trip of these lands, and also thank the Navajo Utah Commission for their request that some of these lease sales be deferred. Um, I want to add on to what Jim said. On top of the September lease sale that's happening in our backyard, there's already been preliminary maps released for a sale happening in the same area this December recess is, this oil and gas leasing is happening at an expedited rate, and it really calls for increased planning, attention, and listening to community members and tribal concerns. So I ask that you support, um, resolution as item number eight today on your agenda, and that you pass that resolution today. Additionally, I ask that you send a letter... Additionally, I ask that you send a letter to Governor Herbert sharing that resolution and asking him to weigh in with the BLM. The second item I want to address to the commission today is, I would appreciate your support on behalf of the town of Bluff as a community member to finding a solution for a drop box for our trash. I think this would greatly benefit not only the town of Bluff, but our neighboring communities. And the third item I wanted to bring up today was, I appreciate that the county offered transportation over the summer to children in the communities south of landing, like Bluff and other communities, that they've offered transportation to the landing recreation center. Because we don't have recreation facilities down here. And I think it's a great opportunity to allow kids in the summer to cool off and get some exercise. So I hope that you continue that practice in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Marilyn Holly.
Marilyn Holly. Cecilia, be standing by. Go ahead.
Hello, commissioners. I want to express my thanks to you, Commissioner Mary Boy and Gray Eyes for the meetings to come south here in our area. I want to thank you for that. And I want to voice my opinion against the change one government. I do not appreciate the northern Monticello area, maybe Blinding area, having to do this. This election, special election. I don't, I'm only against it because I don't understand it. I don't know how it's done. The Navajo tribe on the south side has not been informed of it. We know nothing about it. We have not talked, we have not informed our community on it. So I, personally, I'm against it. And some people I have told are against it also. That's the Red Mesa area and the Mexican Water area. And I'm sure the Navajo Mountain area and the Old Jato area is all the same also. And because most of our people do not understand it. And why is this being done? Because I'm, my understanding is that the San Juan County has no money right now. Where's this money going to be coming from? And that is one of my questions. And I know Mr. Mary Boy, Commissioner Mary Boy stated this earlier, that this is only happening because of two natives being the commissioners now. For years and years, nothing has happened. With three commissioners sitting here, and all of a sudden this comes up. And I don't understand it and I'm against it. And I would love, and I would love and ask the southern area to vote against this, is what I would like to say today. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Next. Cecilia McDermott. Josh be standing by.
Cecilia McDermott, resident of Bluff. My concern is that I just learned yesterday evening that Monticello is planning a town hall meeting. The town hall meeting tomorrow evening at their high school. And when I saw what was on the agenda, it angered me. And so the number one thing on their agenda is to discuss dividing the county. Number two, that San Juan County will uphold the will of the People's Initiative. And number three, they want to hold judicial system accountable for their past decision. I wanted to know if you all were invited to this meeting or knew of this town hall meeting that is taking place tomorrow night. I never saw it published anywhere. I only happened to see an ad on Facebook. You can't. I can only bring this up. You can't answer anything back to me.
We don't have to, but anybody wishes to elaborate to that. And personally, I'm unaware of that.
That's what I wanted to know. I wanted to know if you, as commissioners, knew of this town hall meeting tomorrow evening.
We did receive some information in the last session that we had. I also have a flyer. And also provided my community, Natsan, Navahoma, and will take place. And I explained each of those individual line items of discussion to be had. So that's my position and on that information that you requested. So, thank you.
I think each of the three commissioners received an invitation in our last commission meeting. A handout was given to each one of us inviting each one of us to come to the town hall meeting, yes.
Okay.
But to be clear, it's not a city or county sponsored meeting. I think it's a group of residents who are putting it on on their own accord.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that the people of Bluff, where the people down at this area of the county knew that it was happening and that we are, we can go to the meeting should we so desire.
Commissioner Gray Eyes.
Yes, I believe it's just going to be Blinding and Monticello. So there's no information as to the Navajo Nation chapters regarding the town hall meeting. So like the young lady said there, just heard it on the Facebook. So that's the lack of information and a, how do you say? Sort of like a planned attraction to capture some of the comments that will be publicized or displayed in the media. So I would like to be also be cautious, very cautious of what the group is trying to do.
Thank you very much. Do we have another one, Bruce? Okay, Josh Ewing. Doug Allen be standing by.
Good morning. I'm Josh Ewing, resident here in Bluff and also the executive director for Friends of Seawater. Thanks for having the meeting here. It's the first time I've ever been able to walk to a county commission meeting. I'm not going to get used to it, but it sure is nice every once in a while. So thank you for having this meeting here to hear from us. I also want to encourage you to support the resolution number eight on your agenda item about concern over oil and gas leasing. In addition to the possible impacts on Hovenweed National Monument and tourism, really the largest concern is about cultural resources and sacred sites. As you know, there's a number of really important historic ogons out there. There are petroglyphs and descriptions and of course, thousands of ancestral pueblo sites. It's the most archaeologically rich area in the United States. The American Council on Historic Preservation, which is the national watchdog group to hold the agencies accountable for protecting sacred sites, strongly disagreed with the BLM's binding that they could drill out there without having adverse effects to cultural resources. But despite that, the BLM is moving forward. So I think you're asking them to have caution is really welcome. Another thing that didn't come up as a concern of Bluff that I want to reiterate is that, and the county council has been on this extensively, is our concern about a solar farm industrial facility on the Bluff bench above town here within the boundaries of Bear's Ears National Monument, as proclaimed by President Obama. And we think it's a really bad precedent to set to have industrial development within our watershed, within the view shed of our town where visitors are coming into town, and of course, within the national monument. We're not against solar development, but there's a lot of other places you could do it besides within the national monument boundaries. It sets a really bad precedent. So we encourage you as a commission to support the town in opposing that and expressing opposition to that solar farm to sit up. Also has other unintended consequences like decreasing in amount of grazing that's available to the hermittees up there by about 1,000 acres. So there's a lot of reasons to have concerns about that project and would encourage you to oppose that in the future as well. Thanks again for coming to Bluff.
Thank you very much. Doug Allen. Hank Stevens be standing by.
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to address you. I'm particularly concerned about the fact that we have some citizens of Blinding Monticello that are exploring different forms of government in San Juan County that become, not become a racist issue as you characterize it. And I did not sign the petition. I'm not sure what I, you know, where I would be in favor of voting for this or anything. But the fact that if I had signed it, it should not be labeled as racist. What you've got to realize is there's been a major shift in politics in this county. Would everybody agree with that? We went from predominantly Republican to predominantly Democrat. There's a lot of issues that have come up over environmental issues, you know, you name it. Those are the issues that are, Blinding particularly feels like they're not represented at all. Blinding feels that way. That's the issues that that's presented, not racial. I'm not saying that there isn't some people that are racial. Just like you can't tell me there's not people that are Native American that have problems with angles. So I would urge you to keep it civil. There are a lot of label people that are for exploring other forms of government or even splitting the counties necessarily due to races. So please consider that. Thank you. I always consider, I have a good relationship with you, Campho, over the years. I can't anger you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. But the record shows that the last lawsuit pretty much shows that there is racial in the two Native Americans. And up to this point in time, you still see some of those people coming back to the commission meeting addressing their concern that's geared towards me and Willie. So that pretty much clears the, tells you where things are at.
Well, and I, you know, I'm a long history on that. And it's not going to be solved in time, any particular.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Hank Stevens for being here all the way from, not just on from Navajo Mountain. He is the chapter president at Navajo Mountain. Thank you, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Gray Eyes Adams, Navajo City Council. David and John and then community members. My name is Hank Stevens. Like Commissioner Mary Boy said, I'm from Navajo Mountain. It's a four hour drive. And I do appreciate the drive and I really enjoy coming out here. My comment is on the BLM studies that are actually being initiated by the BLM. And one of my concerns is that the Utaq and Navajia aren't really consulted being a member in the vice chair of the Utaq and Navajia. Also, the intertribal coalition aren't really being consulted on some of these matters that are actually being put before their commissioners. And I think there needs to be some type of dialogue between these different entities and provide a transfer of consentation between all parties. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one question. Has Utah, the Navajia, and intertribal coalition changed their position? And now, because I think they refused to participate in, with the BLM in their management of the downsized monument. But are you saying that they want to participate at this point?
As an appointed coalition member for the Navajo Nation, I think we need to start opening up dialogues again so we can have an input. Reason being is that we're actually being questioned by our local community members as to what position we're actually holding that Bear's Ears National Monument. So for that reason, I think we need to kind of really address the issue so we can actually collaborate on some of these issues.
Yeah, I agree. I agree 100%. But I don't know if you've informed, officially informed the BLM that you want to be, you want to consult with them about Sosja and Eny Creek. I think if you did, I think they would consult with you. But I think up to this point, I think there was, there was an official statement that the Navajia and tribal coalition didn't want to participate in the development of the management plan up to this point.
Okay, well, I guess that's a statement, but there's really nothing in writing. So I do get letters from the BLM, you know, as chapter president as to some of these meetings and all that. But I think other entities need to be informed also. Thank you.
Thank you, Shenille. Okay, that will conclude our citizens' comment. And we will be moving on to the next item. Item three, consideration of referability to application for the ballot. John, David Nelson. Oh, okay, right. This, we're going to modify the agenda.
Morning. Couple of weeks ago, a ballot initiative application was submitted to the clerk's office and the, asking the commission to uphold the will of the people. For the, per Utah code, a legal and fiscal statement is required and a legal study done. And then, and then a question of determining the referability of this initiative application needs to be done by the county within 20 days. And so this commission meeting is the last chance to do that vote within the 20 day period. And I believe that you all have received some information on the, on the study and the legal review pertaining to this proposed initiative. And so just kind of coming to you to ask you your decision on determining the referability of the initiative.
David, any questions? Oh, Kendall, can you answer that question?
I can tell you what I know. I'll just open my address stand up. I can, I can answer the questions with regards to what you should be looking at as far as referability goes. I gave, I sent a letter to the commissioners. I participated in the legal analysis. I think it's important to note that the legal and fiscal analysis is limited to 100 words. That's not a lot of analysis, but that's what state law requires. And so I can answer a question. I mean, if you have a question, I'd be happy to answer it. I'm not really sure what you're looking for in addition to what I've provided to you. But if you have a question, I'd be happy to answer it. But if you have a question, I'd be happy to answer it.
Commissioners?
So is the, the initiative simply was an effort to ask the commission to be more accountable to the citizens? Is that?
So, so I'll read to you the, the language of the initiative. It says, so the initiative would be, "Any issue supported by the signatures of eleven and a half percent of active voters of San Juan County, Utah, must be placed on the ballot of a countywide election to establish the will of the citizenry before publicly supported or opposed by the San Juan County Commission."
So is the problem with the eleven and a half percent? Or what, what created the problem? I, I think I understand what the people were, that had the initiative. I think I understand what they're trying to do, but.
So I think, I think I understand what they're trying to do as well, but I, I'm not sure that I, that I do fully. So there's a couple of things that raise concerns for me. Number one is state law allows a county the size of San Juan County to have an initiative process and a referendum process. And the commission has dealt with a referendum now. And now this is an initiative. So you'll probably be the most experienced commissioner in the state of Utah on this after today. But in San, based on San Juan County's size, one of the requirements is that in order to have an initiative placed on the ballot or come before the commission to determine referability is that they collect eleven and a half percent. So that number is, is the same as what's required in state law. The, the concern that I have as to whether it's referable or not, because it's, so one of the requirements, if you look at, or you know, for, for any of you that, that want to write it down and look at it, it's, it's in Utah Code 28-7-502.7. There's a list of, of things. It, it states that your job as the county commission is, is to determine whether the matter is referable to the voters. If you remember from the referendums, there were only three categories of reasons why something wouldn't be referable. For an initiative, there's, there's more than that. And they're listed in that code section. So one of those is, is letter D. The proposed law could not become law if passed. So state law requires eleven and a half percent of the voters to sign the initiative. But then it also requires, the, the state law goes further with initiatives. It, and with, with resolutions. It requires that, that there be a process where it comes before the commission to determine whether it's something that can come in front of, to go in front of the voters. There's a couple of other requirements, you know, checks and balances, if you will, to make sure that it's appropriate to go on the ballot. And the initiative that is being presented in front of you doesn't account for that. And so in, in the law, we, we talked about preemption. If, if state law or federal law already occupies the field or, or covers the area, then there's not room for local ordinance to also occupy the field because the state law or the federal law preempts it. And so in this case, the eleven and a half percent is not the issue. It's that there aren't any other requirements. Their initiative would, would make the ordinance of, of San Juan County strictly, if eleven and a half percent of the voters, if they collect signatures from eleven and a half percent of the active voters in the county, then it goes on the ballot. And that's not reflective of state law. State law has other requirements that are required. The, the other, and then one of the other, one of the other concerns that I have, again, going back to that code section is with paragraph C, it talks about if the proposed law is administrative rather than legislative in name. So this, this initiative would enact an ordinance that's, that only, that, that the only body or the only entity that would be covered or regulated by this initiative would be the county commission. And so it's different from, you know, I'm going to throw an absurd, an absurdity out there. If there was a, an initiative that required every household in San Juan County to have a horse. Okay, that would, that would, that would require everyone in the county. It would regulate everybody in the county. And here it's only regulating the county commission, which would fall in the realm of a policy or administrative action rather than a legislative action. And so those are my, my two main concerns is that it, it fails the referability question on those two issues. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm not necessarily against the initiative process. If there's a, a proposal that has countywide implications and is of highly important information, I, I'm not against having, having a vote on it from the people rather than just have the three commissioners decide on that. And we've had discussions about this in the past. And, and so I guess I was trying to figure out if the people that were trying to get this initiative on the ballot had just made some mathematical errors in, in what they were trying to do or whether there were some legal challenges or something else. But it, it sounds like you've got some concerns with, with the whole thing.
Yeah, it appears as though they, they're wanting to maybe simplify the process, which I can appreciate. The initiative process and the referendum process changed in 2019, just this year. And the state legislature decided to make that process a lot more complicated than it used to be. But that's, that's not the county commission's fault. That's not the county attorney's fault. It's not John Davis' fault at the clerk's office. That's what the state legislature decided to do. And so we're playing within those parameters that were set forth. And so they, they went to, the state legislature, if you dive into these sections, they, they went to great length to lay out every avenue of who does what and when and how many words and, and how many days, et cetera, et cetera. And so they, the state legislature clearly had the intent of making it a complicated process.
Do we have, John, do we have some kind of a template? If people want to get an initiative on the ballot, that they have to fill all these boxes in and, and so it, so it can be referable? Or are people just going to have to read the state code and figure it out for themselves?
Hold on. Let me establish a motion here for our discussion. Do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Gray Adams. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Adams.
No, I, I, I'm not necessarily second. Why are we making this motion before we, we discuss the matter?
It simply states that whenever time a presenter comes before you and gives you the update, you establish a motion or a discussion. That doesn't mean that you're voting for it. All you do is establish your position to discuss the item. And then after that, you're given a chance for either vote or vote it down. So for the record, to the rules of order, that's what it states, is that you establish a motion and you talk about the item. So do I have a second? The motion? But if we decided to throw that out of the door, I guess we can pretty much just do what we want and go with what we feel.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Everett?
Just process wise, you know, what you said is fine, but you also are okay having some discussion prior to a motion too. But if it helps to clarify what you're talking about specifically to narrow the discussion, sometimes a motion can be helpful to make sure you're talking about what the motion is. However, you know, I think the commissioner would be able to come out to something there.
I think there's also room to make a motion second for discussion. And that's where we are. And at the end of the discussion, if no more comments or opinion, then the motion, the main motion can be amended to either pro or con. So we are in the right path, I think.
Thank you for the clarification. Again, do I have a second?
I'll second it for the purposes of having the discussion, which we were already having.
That's what we should have established before. So we are discussing that particular item. So now I go to Mr. Jim.
Yes.